I'd like to call this meeting of the, a special meeting of the Crestview City Council to order. Our President and Vice President are both out this evening due to different circumstances. So I'll call the meeting to order. And after we have our pledge of allegiance, we will elect a President Pro Tem. So if you please stand and have Councilman Faircliff listen to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a quorum. And gentlemen, it's appropriate at this time for you to select a President Pro Tem.
Mr. Mayor, they need to sign in first, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not letting us sign you, that clerk.
Yes, it is. Try it again. Point it this, point it this way, don't point it that way.
We're good. We're, we are good.
All right, gentlemen, let's proceed with selecting the President Pro Tem.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to nominate Mr. Hayes.
Mr. Hayes has been nominated. Do we have a second?
Go ahead.
It's a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. I had it for a little while.
Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. What we have here is a special meeting, and we have two items on that. So where the council is now open for policymaking legislative session. Keep in mind, this will not be a voting activity that we're doing. It's just for discussion and...
Yes, it is. It is a vote. This is a special meeting.
Special meeting, okay. There will be a vote. So, excuse me. I haven't done this in so long, I've forgotten most everything I halfway knew.
There, there'll be a vote on the resolution. I don't know that the other, the way it was said, was more of information.
Proposed charter changes will not be voted on, Counselor? Counsel, Mr. Attorney. Only thing we're voting on is joint resolution?
I think that's the only thing that's to be voted on. Want, want this charter stuff put on for talk about? It wasn't put on for...
It was put on for discussion, but however, if they so make a decision, it can be voted on.
Well, I was just thinking that they may want the whole council here when they make that decision.
Right, that's what I'm saying, if they feel confident with it.
Okay, as President Pro Tem, I'd like to state this time that we will not be making a vote on the ordinance sixteen sixty proposed charter change, but hopefully, next time, we'll have a full council here to vote on that. At this time, have a public opportunity on the council propositions and items for discussion or resolution, joint resolution with Okaloosa County and the ordinance proposed charter change. Anyone would like to speak on these propositions may address the council by raising your hand and I'll call you. Yes, sir. If you state, come to podium, state your name.
No, not yet, Mr. Shirley. This is, this is public.
This for, this for a public opportunity on council propositions. Anyone from the public, like to speak, anyone from the public? Anyone from the public, no one from the public, I'm seeing. So we'll have, go to item number five, which is item for discussions. And what we have here is a resolution eighteen thirteen, a joint resolution with Okaloosa County. Madam Clerk, if you might read that for us, please.
Thank you. Joint Resolution of the Board of Okaloosa County Commissioners and the City Council of Crestview, Florida. A joint resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Okaloosa County and the City Council of Crestview, Florida, recognizing the traffic crisis on Highway eighty-five South in and around the city of Crestview as the number one public safety, economic, and quality of life challenge in the county. Adopting the Southwest Crestview Bypass and Raspberry Road Connector as top infrastructure project for Triumph funding for Okaloosa County, providing for joint application for Triumph Gulf Coast Incorporated board funding and local government commitments in funding partnerships. This is resolution eighteen thirteen.
Okay, that being read, and I see our President step in soon as I complete this. He's already has the gavel, be turned over to him. Ms. Teresa, would you, did you like to have anything to say on this?
I know nothing about this.
Okay, no, no problem. The President's here now, Mr. Whitten, so with that being said, I now relinquish my position and turn over to our President.
All right. Thank you. I apologize for, I apologize for being late, but my wife is just coming out of surgery now, and so my daughter's with her, and she'll be okay. Where are we, eighteen thirteen?
We're on the right there.
Okay. Well, why, why did we not have the public opportunities first?
We have had that.
We did.
No one wanted to speak.
We had one to speak?
No one wanted to speak.
No one wanted to speak? Oh, case of presser. Okay. Okay, resolution eighteen thirteen. First of all, again, let me apologize a little bit. Y'all got this late because it is a joint resolution, and I've been working this with the Chairman of the Okaloosa County Commissioners, Graham Fountain, and, and I got this late, late Friday afternoon after close of business. I'm sorry, I'm just recovering from my, I thought with something. And, and I noticed a, an error on the joint resolution, so I asked, thank you, thank you, thank you, asked the, asked Commissioner Fountain to have it fixed, and he did, but you have to understand, today, he was a pet to Colwood Medical Problems. He's undergoing procedure right now, so it, it's been hectic, and Samantha made the changes and got it back to me this morning. And as soon as, as soon as I got it, Betty sent it out to everybody, so the, this is a pretty long resolution, as you probably just picked up by the city clerk reading it. But what we really need to focus on is the portion that concerns the city of Crestview. And so, first of all, why are we doing this joint resolution? And that is because on Thursday, we're having the huge transportation workshop, in which we're going to have, sorry, we're going to have the state legislators there, FDOT, Eglin Air Force Base, County Commissioners, and City Council, and the mayor of our city, city clerk, everybody's going to be there. And, and what this is, is this is a, a resolution to support an application to the Triumph Committee to receive monies toward the southwestern portion of the Crestview bypass. And what we want to be able to do is take this resolution to the transportation workshop and demonstrate to them that we're not just asking for state money. Whenever you have the Triumph Committee involved, first thing you want to do is see what skin you have in the game. And if you look at this, the county is committing approximately thirty million dollars toward this project, and we're committing about eight million dollars. But it's only based on if the half cent sales tax increase goes through. If that doesn't go through, this whole thing is not going to go, it's not going to go anywhere. This whole thing is contingent upon the half cent. And that was based on numbers from the Florida Department of Revenue that said if the people vote to increase the sales tax by one half cent, the city of Crestview will realize about one point eight million dollars per year over what we're getting right now. So this commitment and this resolution is not eight million dollars out of our current budget. It's eight million dollars if the people decide that they want to pass the sales tax in support of many things, increasing the size of the county jail, taking care of storm water projects, and taking care of road problems. With one point eight million dollars per year, for five years, if we commit one point five million dollars, which is what we'd be committing, that's seven and a half million dollars, and five hundred thousand dollars from our gas sales, our, our gas sales, which we already committed toward the Raspberry Road project, we would come up with eight million dollars, we would be, be able to put, along with the county, toward the project. Now, the project itself is a two hundred million dollar project, one hundred ninety-nine thousand nineteen, one hundred ninety-nine million nineteen thousand dollars. And this, we're asking the state to pay approximately half of that, ninety-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventeen cents. I made up the seventeen cents, I'm sorry. I've got to have a sense of humor. And, and we would pick up the tab of about thirty-eight million dollars, thirty from the county and eight million dollars from the state, I mean, from the, from us and the city. Now, we were going to commit millions of dollars for the Raspberry Road project anyway. We had committed that. We, we told the county, if y'all had this half cent sales tax increase and the people accept it, we submitted projects that we wanted covered. One of them was Raspberry Road. That project itself is a nine million dollar project. This now will be absorbed into the southwest bypass that we're going to present to the transportation workshop. So instead of being a separate project, it'll be incorporated in the one hundred ninety-nine million dollar project. So what we're trying to do with this resolution is to demonstrate to the transportation workshop we're having on Thursday, that there is agreement between the county and the city that we are willing to expend these kind of dollars in order to fix or help start to fix on the state road eighty-five. Now, you and I both know, that's not the total solution. We've already proposed a eastern bypass, which is only conceptual in nature, so this would be the first leg of that. In, in my opinion, if we don't, as a city council, if we don't support this, we're sending the message to, to our citizens that we're not really serious about fixing it. This is the only solution we've come up with so far. And, and it'll cost us eight million dollars of money we're not getting right now, that we will get in the future if the sales tax is passed. So what we're looking for here, is I'm looking for a vote from the city council to say that we will go in with the county and support this resolution that Chairman Fountain and I will bring to the workshop on Thursday. So I think I've covered everything. Let's see if I missed anything. No, I don't believe I did. So what I would do now is take any questions I might have from a fellow councilman. Any questions, gentlemen?
Nope, Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Hayes.
No questions, but additional information, which we have on our resolution here that's proposed, is that, that the, the area that plans on, looking to extend from one twenty-three all the way up to Crestview, and it was, well, it wasn't surprising here, also in this resolution, it mentions, we're at over fifty-two thousand cars right now, and that the Department of Transportation has declared that this highway is a failed transportation system, which we all know, but they have declared that. And this, they noted that in the resolution, this is only designate hurricane or disaster evacuation route, north and south, and that it's affecting the operation of Duke Field. And we know that if we don't pass this, if it affects Duke, the military in any way, they can always say, hey, we can't complete our mission here, so we need to go forward. So there are some real important things. They also, this resolution makes known to the fact that, been looking for a solution for over twenty-five years, so it didn't just something that just started. So it would be incumbent on us as a council, in my opinion, that we pass this wholeheartedly. That's all, Mr. President.
Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Blocker, go ahead.
I concur with what we have on our data sheet of this resolution, but my greatest concern, and we've got to make that effort, and make sure that the people, that the people is aware, and our sales, half cent sales tax is going to be the contributing factor where this does or don't. We've got to let them know, and I believe that these people will go with that half cent sales tax to fix our traffic.
Any other comments?
If it's affecting Duke Field, maybe the DOD...
Yes, Ms. Faircliff.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was going to say, if it's affecting Duke Field, maybe the DOD would like to pitch in.
That's a great comment, and, and I did fail to mention that Eglin, it will be represented at the transportation workshop, and which will be representing the, not just Duke Field and Eglin, but of course, the Seventh Forces that falls underneath the territory of Eglin. And you're right, I don't know, is that the general can get involved in a political statement, but he certainly can, can let it be known that the condition of the road impacts, has a negative impact on military readiness, which is what we look, look for from him. One other thing I'd like to mention, though, that I, and I kind of went over it real quickly, and that is, if you look at, and, and two of, two of us here on the Okaloosa Walton Transportation Planning Organization, along with Councilman Cox, and so we go to all these meetings, and if you look at state, you look at the PJ Adams widening, which is part of this project that we're trying to get money for, if you look at the timeline, it said that we would have the first phase under construction on FY two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Well, we know that's gone, you know? That's, that's long gone. And we would have the right of way, well, the right of way has been purchased, I believe, for the, for all four phases, but we haven't even started turning any dirt yet on PJ Adams. If you look at some of the other portions of this, FY seventeen, eighteen, if we start going all the way up to US ninety, it's FY nineteen and twenty, which I don't believe will happen, because we're already behind schedule on the other ones. This resolution is also asking FDOT to move this into a five-year window, and that is from the date that they will buy into it, along with the city and the county and the state legislators, that from the time it's approved to the time it's finished, would be a five-year window. Sounds impossible, right, in, in, in any kind of funding. And I'm not saying we're circumventing OWTPO, what we're kind of doing is nudging them and saying, we, we think it has a higher priority than what we have here, and we're going to come up with some money in order to change the priority. And I did, I get to have a meeting, I had a meeting last week with the Secretary of the FDOT District Three, Philip Gaynor. He met with me and Commissioner Graham Fountain, and he is supposed to be at this meeting, but like any other person in a high-level job, he doesn't always control his own schedule. So he said, if I'm not going to be there, there'll be somebody from my office there. But he said, he can't make any promises ahead of time, but what he said is what you guys are presenting is something that, that could happen. And so he will be there, and we'll be trying to convince him that it'll, it'll happen. So we have a lot of players that are going to be involved in trying to get this done. So if we don't have any other comments or questions, what I'd like to do is call for action by the council.
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Hayes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution number eighteen dash thirteen.
I have a motion, do I have a second on that?
Where's your second?
I have a motion, second, that we approve resolution...
Eighteen thirteen.
Eighteen dash thirteen. Any other discussion? All right.
You'll need to do a handbook search, since you weren't here for the...
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk? Okay, because I'm not here, really. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Can vote, carry the four to zero with one absence, and that's Councilman Cox. Okay. All right. Moving on to ordinance sixteen sixty proposed charter changes.
Good evening, gentlemen. It was requested by council for, for some additional review and to have, and to have our attorney look at our ordinance and come up with recommendations, suggestions, and tweak it out so that in anticipating us having our first reading on May fourteenth...
Thank you.
The handout, the top sheet is the previous three questions that we had presented before. A couple of musk...
The top sheet, we just got this evening?
Yeah, that you just got this evening.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that one is simply a print of the questions that were given to you in your packet some months ago, showing the three questions. And the second sheet is provided by the attorney who is here to present his recommendations and the question that's on the, the last sheet of the handout you guys just got. So if you would like to introduce our attorney, so...
Yeah, if you would, please.
Scott Shirley?
Thank you, good evening. My name is Scott Shirley, and I act as special counsel. I work with staff quite often with Crestview on various issues, oftentimes their land use issues, and, and some other issues as well. This, this, as you know, is a, you know, it's ultimately a charter revision if it passes, and that is a revision to a law, and so it has to be very clear what, what you, you adopted, what you have on the, on the ballot for vote. And, and so I looked through the, the actual charter amendment language, and I compared it to the existing charter language, and, and I have to tell you that it is a little confusing. The status of the existing charter is a little confusing, because you have a number of charters and amendments to charters, failed amendments to charters, and then, then on top of that, you had the Municipal Home Rule Powers Act adopted in nineteen seventy-three, which caused the editors of municide code to, to delete certain parts of the charter as being converted to ordinances or invalidated by the Home Municipal Home Rule Powers Act. And so the, the existing charter organization and substance doesn't match up with the new charter, in particular with organization. In other words, everything's reorganized, I don't have any problem with that at all. In fact, I think the, the proposed charter has a good organization to it, makes sense, but it in no way matches the organization of the existing charter, at least in as much as we have been able to determine the organization of the existing charter. And so when you get to, you know, Teresa asked me, well, what, what should the ballot question be? And some charter amendments, as you, as you probably know by now, do a single ballot question for an entire new charter, or for just a little part of a charter that's being amended. And while other charter amendments do multiple ballot questions that will, you know, say, approve one part of a new charter, repeal part of the, a specific part of the old charter, you know, approve another part of the, the new charter and repeal a part of the old charter. And you've got to identify in the ordinance that sets the ballot question, if you're going to use those individual multiple ballot questions, if you're going to use that format, you got to, you got to state, if that ballot question is approved, what's in and what's out. The ordinance has to clearly state, because if they're approved and you're not clearly stating what's in and what's out, then you, you end up with confusion. You don't know what the state of your charter is. And so when Teresa asked me, you know, gee, let's, let's do a ballot question, of course, you're limited to seventy-five words, which, let me tell you, seventy-five words isn't much, but it's legal to do a seventy-five word ballot question to approve an entire new charter. I mean, that's perfectly legal. I researched the issue, and, and there's no case law whatsoever saying that you can't do that. You don't have to use multiple questions. And so me being a legal technician, really, she asked me what would be the best way to do it, what would be the cleanest, most clear way to do it? I said, do a single ballot question for the entire charter. You know, if it's approved, the whole, old charter is repealed, including any prior versions, and the entire new charter is adopted and goes into effect. That is the simplest, cleanest way to do it. I, I understand that, now, I kind of, I think I understand the dynamics of what is happening here. There are certain issues that citizens feel very strongly about that should be in the new charter. Some citizens are less enthusiastic about other changes, some, maybe they can even take or leave, you know? The, so what I would urge is, if the council wants to approve an ordinance that has multiple ballot questions, you can have a single ballot question that approves the entire charter. If it, if it doesn't pass, then you can have additional ballot questions on specific issues of importance. So if there's an issue like, for instance, the manager-managed form of government, if that is, if that is the top priority, then you could have that as a single ballot question, and we could write the ordinance so that it says, this language is adopted and this language is repealed. But at this point, to go through and do the entire new charter that way would be extremely time-consuming and something that I would not be able to get to within the next two weeks and have completely finished. So my recommendation from a technical legal standpoint is that you go with a single ballot question, because that is the... approve one part of a new charter, repeal part of the, a specific part of the old charter, you know, approve another part of the, the new charter and repeal a part of the old charter. And you've got to identify in the ordinance that sets the ballot question, if you're going to use those individual, multiple ballot questions, if you're going to use that format, you got to, you got to state, if that ballot question is approved, what's in and what's out. The ordinance has to clearly state, because if they're approved and you're not clearly stating what's in and what's out, then you, you end up with confusion. You don't know what the state of your charter is. And so when Teresa asked me, you know, gee, let's, let's do a ballot question, of course, you're limited to seventy-five words, which, let me tell you, seventy-five words isn't much, but it's legal to do a seventy-five-word ballot question to approve an entire new charter. I mean, that's perfectly legal. I, I researched the issue, and, and there's no case law whatsoever saying that you can't do that. You don't have to use multiple questions. And so me being a legal technician, really, she asked me what would be the best way to do it, what would be the cleanest, most clear way to do it? I said, "Do a single ballot question for the entire charter. You know, if it's approved, the whole, old charter is repealed, including any prior versions, and the entire new charter is adopted and goes into effect." That is the simplest, cleanest way to do it. I, I understand that, now, I kind of, I think I understand the dynamics of what is happening here. There are certain issues that citizens feel very strongly about that should be in the new charter. Some citizens are less enthusiastic about other changes, some, maybe they could even take or leave, you know? The, so what, what I would urge is, if the council wants to approve an ordinance that has multiple ballot questions, you can have a single ballot question that approves the entire charter. If it, if it doesn't pass, then you can have additional ballot questions on specific issues of importance. So if there's an issue like, for instance, the manager-managed form of government, if that is, if that is the top priority, then you can have that as a single ballot question, and we can write the ordinance so that it says, "This language is adopted, and this language is repealed." But at this point, to go through and do the entire new charter that way would be extremely time-consuming and something that I would not be able to get to within the next two weeks and have completely finished. So my recommendation from a technical, legal standpoint is that you go with a single ballot question, because that is the clearest, that is the absolute clearest way to adopt these amendments. If you go with multiple ballot questions, we can, we can do that, but I would say prioritize maybe one or two of those as what you really, really want and need in the charter amendment. And, and then don't worry about a lot of the reorganization and all that kind of restatement of powers and duties and all that. But, but then again, to, to reiterate, as the lawyer for the city on this particular issue, I would recommend that you go with the single ballot question, because that, if that's approved, it's absolutely clear what happened. Okay? So that's, that's all I have. I could go through and explain some of the other changes to the ordinance. I made some changes to the title, just to clarify what the ordinance was doing. I made changes to the effect, the, the effective date and the repeal and replace language to make it clear what the ordinance was doing. I, and there's a few tweaks to the actual charter language itself. In particular, I, I'm recommending deleting references to Section one hundred point three sixty-one Florida statutes, which is a municipal recall process. That is a process that exists under state law, has its own procedures, you have to follow them, you don't have any choice. If, if that process is invoked, that's on page... Let me see. Well, for some reason, these are all, that's on page one, but it's the tenth, page one, because...
What's the, what's the section?
It is the, it is, that's a good question. It's Section four point oh-two under City Council, and it's on the second page of that section at the end. So re, you know, trying to redefine neglect of duty under the, the Florida statute regarding municipal recall, I don't recommend that. You know, that, there again, you know, there's plenty of case law on that, and that's a process you really can't change, it's really preempted to the state. So if somebody files a recall petition, there is a specific process you have to follow, and then if it's legally sufficient, then it goes to a referendum vote on the recall.
Are you, Mr. President?
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Faircliff.
Are you suggesting to delete that entire four point oh-two or just parts?
No, and you know, the, the one, let me show you, let me show you what I'm looking at. I'm looking at my, my redline version.
That's what I'm looking at.
And so all I'm doing is I'm just deleting this area, last area.
Okay. All right, well, it's stricken already.
And, like, that's what I do.
Oh, okay.
That's my, that was my heavy work.
All right, that's what was confusing.
And then, to the extent that you see this language as underlined, that is my heavy work as well.
Okay.
Just clarifying.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. President, go ahead.
Also, the Section nine point oh-three repeal, repeal of former charter provisions, I made some changes to that. That is the second to the last page of the document that I am holding. And we, we made that change because we couldn't find Chapter fifteen, four twenty-five laws of Florida as amended. And we, so we, we went, and there's, there've been charters that have been adopted since that time and then amended further. The references to munica, that are in munica, the historical references are dramatically different than this, so we just said, all charter provisions in effect prior to this date.
Charter you've got in here that they're adopting, is that basically the one that committee submitted to?
It is, yes, sir.
And the changes you, you've got in your question is city manager and appointment of the clerk, or two, two of the things that are in there?
They are, they are both in there, yes.
Yeah.
And this is, I made, I made really to the body of the, of the charter revisions that were arrived at and approved by the Charter Review Committee, I made very, very few, very few changes, just, really just clarifications. And I made really no, no substantive changes to the, to the form of government, the electoral process, anything like that. I made no changes at all to that, to the substance of that.
Gentlemen, questions, comments? Go ahead, Mr. Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Shirley, I appreciate your work. I know you're working down in Lake City, but, or down in Tallahassee.
I am in Tallahassee, yes, sir. Right down the road from the lead.
There's, on your charter replacement question, where you have the one question which encompasses the former government, the city man, which city manager appointed by the council, and then your city attorney, the city clerk, and department head. All those are, are good. Only concern that really bothers me, and I think is going to concern our citizens really, is that city attorney and department heads, I don't think there's any problem with that whatsoever. I think the problem, and I'm almost sure the problem, is going to come from, from where you have these combined with other things. It, it, as you know, and you know well, more, way, way more than I do concerning this, but when you put too many things together, and you got options, if I, if I like everything on here except one thing, that means it's a no vote. Now, with that being said, and, and the previous attempts have been because of the combination, to be fair to all the citizens, we definitely need a separation between that clerk and the former government with the, with the manager. Is that possible, of what you were stating?
It's, it's possible, but whether it's possible in the next two weeks is the question. Because if you've got to approve this on May fourteenth, and you want, you want me to identify and separate out those as two separate issues, the manager form of, of management and the city clerk, then, I mean, frankly, I mean, that would be prioritizing, as I, as I discussed before. The best way to do this would be to have the committee meet again and talk about how they want to prioritize and reorganize to, to divide out these issues separately. Because what I come up with, they may not like, you know, the way I have to reorganize it to, to come up with that. But what we could do is if, is if those are the issues that you really want separate ballot questions on, if the whole question doesn't pass, then these two additional ballot questions come into play. We can, we can word the ordinance like that, and Teresa and I can take a shot at looking at the language and seeing if there's a way that we can, that we, that we can make that happen, although it's, it's going to be tricky to do. But I, I, I think I, as I said earlier, I understand the concern better now than I did when I was working on this last week with her.
So if I understand you correctly, this one that you, that you have proposed, that would still remain on there, but then below that, it would go into another option, understanding what you're, I think, understanding that you don't accept the whole four, as, and then you would have separate ones below that.
Yeah, those, those would be your, your, your priorities. So if the whole ballot question doesn't pass, then under the ordinance, the ordinance would say, "If this doesn't get more than fifty percent of the vote, then we go and we look at these two other ballot questions." And if those ballot questions are approved, if ballot question number two is approved, this, these sections of the ordinance go into effect. And if ballot question number three is approved, these sections of the ordinance go into effect, and other parts are correspondingly repealed out of the existing charter. You follow how that would work?
I'm following you. I don't know if our citizens is going to follow that.
It's, it's complicated.
I see some heads shaking here, you know, but that's not, but I'm trying to comprehend it myself, and if I got a couple of minutes in a ballot booth, I'm not going to understand it. And we want to make this as, as efficient and effective as possible. Now, you know, me, I, I, I'm only, I'm one vote, but I'm in favor of the change. I'll let everybody know, I'm in favor of the change. But there's two, it's too complicated with that, all four things in there, and it's going to be the same way for our citizens. I, I, I just got a feel, I don't know our citizens that well, well, I know them, some of them that well, but I don't think, this is what we're looking for, in my opinion. And I'm, I'm only one vote.
Okay. So am I, am I to understand, then, that you would favor a single ballot question?
No.
Okay, so you don't favor that, and you don't favor the alternative approach?
No, I figure, I favor the alternative approach. You said, "Do I favor a single ballot?" And I'm saying, "No, I don't."
You favor the alternative approach.
I favor your alternative. Now, we're on the same page.
Okay, very good. That helps.
All right. Mr. President, I'm through.
Ms. Faircliff?
I'm going to expand a little bit on what Mr. Hayes has said. What you've said, the way I'm understanding it, is if we, if the voters turn down a single question, for whatever the reason, you say, "Then we can look at the other alternatives." That's another election.
They will vote, no, no, sir. Well, I have seen, I have seen some pretty fancy ordinance wording in this particular area. And what the ordinance would say, you know, that the voters would just see three questions on the ballot, one overall, and two, they would just vote on all three of them. But to figure out how they would operate, you would have to review the ordinance to, to see that in the event that the overall ballot question doesn't get more than fifty percent of the vote, then the two other ballot questions come into, come into play. They don't, they don't really matter in, as far as the ordinance is concerned, unless that first ballot question doesn't get fifty percent of the vote. Then they come into play, and those are voting on specific issues.
But no one is going to know whether or not it's fifty percent, because the election is going to be ended by that, determined, by that count is done.
That's, just, all of that, that would just happen by operation of the ordinance.
So then we're talking about another election, which would be a municipal election, which is historically poorly attended. I'm, I'm favoring, I just think we're packing too much into one question.
It would, it would be my recommendation, yes, I think that, that is a good point. If you have priorities, then the, the best way to deal with that is probably to, you know, to work on the ordinance, work on a couple of specific priorities in a separate ordinance, and then, and then put that, you know, basically delay that till the next election. I mean, you, you certainly could put this on the ballot as a single ballot question to see if it passes, and then you could have as your next step, if that doesn't pass, to prioritize which of those charter amendments the council, as a majority, thinks should be adopted in the, in a new charter, and then structure a new charter to do that. Just amendments to the charter.
Well, I think this is about the fifth stab at this, something like that, fourth, fifth, maybe even sixth. But just so people here would know what we're talking about, the one question that would be on the, the ballot we're talking about, it says, "Shall the city of Crestview repeal the current charter," and so on and so on, with the city manager or council, or the, creating the council manager form of government with a appointed city manager, an appointed city attorney, an appointed clerk, and appointed department heads. They may be in favor of a charter change, but they may be against appointing a city manager. Because the history of Crestview, up until this, this council, the councils weren't trusted a whole lot, is from what I gather with people I talked to, and they didn't trust any appointing they were going to do. They favored an election, and I feel that's why the last referendum failed, was because the people didn't have any say-so. They were putting it all in one question, and they were going to leave it up to the city council to... Now, I have nothing, no problem with that. I think, I think this is a, a, a good board here. And we would qualify anyone before we made any kind of appointment, regardless of who they were. And so I'm good with it, I just don't know if the people are.
The, I have seen, the, the question comes about, what if you have two ballot questions that are in the alternative? You know, one is what we have here, and the other is what we have here, but without the appointments that you were just referring to. You know, just tweak the language to eliminate that and make it as close to the way the current charter handles that as, as possible. Then the traditional way of handling that is whichever of those two gets, if they both pass, whichever of those two has the most votes becomes the charter. There is a chance, though, that they could absolutely tie, because every, you know, I don't know the answer to that. But you follow what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
You know, you could do two in the alternative, and that's probably something we could do with the amount of time we have left, if you want to make that the alternative. But we're going to have to, I would request that a pretty clear consensus be expressed today to have us structure the ordinance that way.
One more comment. We've worked so hard, and the Charter Review Committee has worked so hard, and Ms. Teresa's office has worked so hard, and so has Ms. Betsy, everybody has worked long and hard on this, and I sure would hate to see it fail just because they disagreed with one thing in that one question.
Well, what you could do is you could make a decision by consensus, you know, we could just have one ballot question without the appointments as part of the, you know, of the, of the issue. And that way, you'd have a ballot question that, that would be worded differently, because the, the charter amendment would not include the appointed city manager, city clerk, but would retain an elected city clerk, and wouldn't make reference to appointment of a city manager at all. And what we would do is we would pull in whatever mandatory language in the existing charter and plug that in.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Block, do you have anything before I call on the mayor?
Yeah, I have. We could go all over the playing field here on this. Of these options, A, B, C, and D, if, and I believe in keeping it simplified, but you don't have the ability to here to simplify this with the needed information that is needed for these people to make a concise, permanent answer on this any yes or no deal. And once they, we would approve this Option one, A, B, C, or D, within the vast in effect, but then what is entail later, and like, I could say, I could go all over the field, but then what you have so recommended and suggested there in Section five point oh-four of the departments, that's on page ten, from that standpoint, what I disagree and have questions on, where it says that the department head shall be appointed by the city council with the recommendation of the city manager. Listen to it. "The city manager shall make recommendation to the city council regarding the organization of the city government and prescribe the duties and responsibilities assigned to these various department heads." I'm against that. So that city manager thinks he knows everything, he don't know nothing. We've got department heads in place here that knows what they do and should do and will do, but that the verbiage, I don't agree with all this verbiage that we find throughout this documentation here. But I know you've spent a lot of working time, and this city has too, but I'm disappointed in several areas of verbiage.
Well, this, this, that actually, that Article five, appointed city officials, is actually language that the Charter Review Commission or Committee...
True, I understand.
They're, they're the ones that drew that up.
But we got to simplify this thing, but don't, it's not ongoing to sunset.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to comment?
Yes, there are a couple of things. I would like for us to review the deadline that we're facing to get this on the August ballot. What, what is that deadline?
We must have it to the supervisor of election on the 15th of June. What I had presented would be, was to have a first reading on May 14th, which allot's for another workshop, and then on June 11th, have your second reading and adoption. Now, if you need to allot out more time, you could always call a special meeting on the 29th for your first reading and your...
Twenty eighth, we moved it to 28th, didn't we?
You made, you moved it to the 29th, from the 28th to the 29th. You could always call the special, uh, meeting on the 29th to have your first reading of your ordinance and have the second reading on, um, June 11th, and still meet the timeframe for the supervisor election, still meet the advertisement date for your ordinance.
My concern is that if we take too long with this, we will miss that, that date in August, which I think is the most favorable time for us to have this on the ballot. And I do believe that, uh, that this is pretty accepted form of government, the council manager form of government, and it is, it's recommended, I think, I don't know of any place that the, uh, the city manager would not, uh, recommend different department heads. I think that's pretty traditional and, or accepted in most cities. And I'd like for us to try to, as much as possible, and I know that we need to, each, each person, now, we cannot take city taxpayer money to promote this, but as individuals, we can. And I think it's important for our citizens to know how we feel about it, why, I'm not sure everybody knows how tough it is with the current charter that we have. As the city keeps growing by leaps and bounds, and there's no one form, a, a chain of command for all the departments, they're all just, uh, they're separate, they have different bosses, that does not work really well. It may have worked really well in 1961, and there's several thousand less people here, but this, this city is not going to stop growing anytime soon, and it becomes more and more complicated for us to have a, a functioning city government. And I think we just need to look at, uh, the different, uh, opportunities that we have at this point. That committee, they had so many more people come in and talk to them this time, and I think maybe the, uh, we may be underestimating our voters. I think maybe they know a little bit more now that what we're facing with the growth of, uh, the city and the government staying static, that, uh, they may be a lot more acceptable to, to this ballot initiative this time. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nobody else, and I'll, I'll take the floor if I can. First of all, Ms. Shirley, thank you, thank you for, uh, helping us out, and, and trust me, I know you spend a lot of time, and I really, really wanted to find something I liked in this and, and I really don't. I don't have any problems with the recommended changes in the charter, the, the red line things that you did, but I have a whole lot of problem with the, with the ballot question. First of all, uh, my understanding was you were being brought on as a second set of eyes to our city attorney. At what point did Mr. Hawley get involved in this?
Well, I, I assume he was involved before I was.
Did you never communicate with Mr. Hawley doing this?
No, not before, just a few minutes ago.
You have or haven't?
Have not.
You have not been involved? That's, that's not the understanding, but when, when we first, when Teresa recommended to us that we consult with you, and I questioned, "Why are we going out of town to get an attorney?" She said, "Two eyes are better than one." But it doesn't appear to me that we even had a set of eyes from our own city. Now, that bothers me a whole lot.
No, but I agree, I agree with what he's got here. There's, there's so many problems involved in trying to adopt the charter in different parts. Spread out, it's, it's gonna be over.
I, I understand that, but, but again, if you look at, I don't know why you would have to put in this that we're going to appoint city attorney, city clerk, department heads. It's already in the old charter, we've always been doing that. That just, well, all that does is confuse people. Now it looks as though, if I'm, if I'm a citizen, and I'm out there looking at this ballot, and it says the city council wants to appoint the city manager, the city clerk, department heads, uh, the city attorney, uh, city coroner, no, we got rid of the coroner. But, you know, it just appears as though, we have too many words in there that we don't need, because we already have it in the charter. We, we, the old charter grants us the right to do that. And, and as far as the wording this goes, on the 13th of July, our supervisor election came into the Charter Review Committee, and I have the minutes here. And in the minutes, here was a question that was asked to our supervisor elections. Mr. Mullin, Mr. Mullin asked if the election has to be one item or can it be multiple? Supervisor election, Mr. Lux, explained how the city of Full, Full Walton Beach used seven different items, and by the way, they passed six out of seven in election, and they were mostly successful. He stated that Crestview's election history has failed likely because it was all in one item, and to be too cautious of voter fatigue. He then went on, when Genevieve Di Notale, a news reporter, asked what the technical issue was, Mr. Lux responded that voter fatigue and the amount of information in the referendum item. So we had the individual who's responsible for conducting elections, and the autovocal Lucicani, uh, telling us that in the minutes that I have here, that, uh, he's not really making a recommendation one way, that he's just saying that, uh, he believes that maybe that might have something to do with failing the previous two or three times. And then he came in front of the city council on the 13th, oh, wait a minute, on the 11th of December, and I went and reviewed the video, so I didn't misquote him. And his quote on there was, "A catch-all item is a bad idea." And so he led us out on path to the, the, both the Charter Review Committee and the city council, that we need to split this up, because exactly what my fellow councilmen have been saying. If you have, you have these things tied together and you don't like one thing, you're gonna vote no against the whole thing, and you just shot it down. And when you have separate ones, are you in favor of, you know? And I understand you have to talk about the charter. So why couldn't you say, "Shall the city of Crestview repeal the current charter and put into effect a new charter creating a council manager form of government with a council-appointed city manager?" And then make the same statement for the city clerk, appointing the city clerk. And then if you have to make some other statement about the city council having to change the charter in accordance with the ordinance, that's fine, but, but I really think, uh, and I'm not trying to program it for success or failure, I'm trying to program it for fairness, and I don't think it's fair to tie two or three different items together and watch it go down the tubes like we watched it go down the last two or three times. I have a copy of the Full Walton Beach ballot, and, uh, very simple, you know, they, they had, like I said, it's, uh, what did I tell you, seven different items, just like that, seven different statements, bam, 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 and six out of seven passed, pretty successful, which is what the supervisor election, uh, recommended to us. So, uh, I will tell you, uh, I have a problem, a big problem with this. I also have a problem with the, what the mayor brought up, and that is our time. Eight months ago, when I said this is something we need to move along real quickly, "Oh, we got plenty of time, we got eight months," and here we are now, right up against the wall, because we're saying we're gonna have a second reading on 11th June, and it's due to the supervisor election on the 15th of June, four days. All we have to do is have a hiccup, and we've done exactly what happened in the last one that was thrown off the ballot. And I, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna use every ounce of my body to make sure that doesn't happen. I believe we need to get this together in, in, in less than one, one ballot referendum, and have it to the city council on the 14th of May for the first reading of that ordinance, and have a special meeting in the end of May to have the second reading, so we're not caught up in sitting there four days before it's due to the supervisor election. If you haven't, uh, got the sense that I'm opposed to this, uh, you can ask any questions you may, but I, I am totally opposed to it.
Well, that, and, uh, in defense of myself, I was only brought in six weeks ago, and it's only now that I'm understanding the dynamics of the issue thoroughly.
But you see, you're saying, if our city attorney had been involved, nobody knows the, the temperature of this city better than our own city attorney.
Well, you know, that, that, that may be true.
I believe it is, yes.
But, I mean, we could, I, I would be interested, by the way, in looking at that Full Walton Beach ordinance, not just the ballot questions, but the entire ordinance.
Sure.
To see how they structured it, 'cause my guess is it's, it's structured a lot differently, you know, in terms of the charter amendments themselves than, uh, than the way these charter amendments are structured. But...
It may be, Mrs. Shirley, we, we've got to figure out a way, you've heard it from every one of us.
We can certainly...
This is unacceptable, to have everything all tied together into one statement. It's not gonna be a fair test.
Well, um, all I can say is what, I mean, and I, I think there's a consensus in that regard.
Oh, I think so?
Yeah.
Yeah, I see that.
It, it is gonna require some significant wordsmithing to, to make that happen, to make separate ballot questions happen. We can, we can give it a shot and see if we can, we can crank it out quickly enough, if that's what you wanna do. Now, the other thing we could do is we could...
I don't, Mr. Shirley, I, I don't wanna be rude, but I, I don't want you to give it a shot. If you think you can do it, then we'll find someone who can, because we want this on the 28th of August referendum. That's what we want.
And I can, then I can do it. I'll do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. President? Yes, Mr. President. I'm sorry, Mr. Fairclough.
Ms. Teresa handed this to us, is this...
I have no idea where it came from. It disappeared. But we've seen it before, but we didn't have a copy of it.
Right, but I don't, I don't, I don't see what the problem is with using that, just like it is. Unless, unless you've got to go through stacks of law books to make sure every word in there is legal or something, I don't know why it would take so long to sit down at a computer and type it out.
What the ordinance is gonna have to do is on each of those ballot questions, it's gonna have to describe which part of the charter, charter is repealed, if that succeeds, and which part of this new charter document goes into effect. So, you know, that's, that's how it's gonna have to work, and that's why, you know, there's a lot, it's a lot more than just writing a ballot question, it's writing the ordinance that operationally is gonna control what happens if those particular ballot questions are each individually approved.
Could, could that not be satisfied by making copies of the, uh, the thing you have stricken and added to here, available to the public, either online or, and...
And that will be available to the public.
Okay, so then...
But we've got, we've got a lot of additional wordsmithing to do on the ordinance, to, to make sure that each of those ballot questions operates properly, based on which one is approved and which one isn't.
President, why don't we go back to the verbiage?
Mr. President.
Are you done?
Yes, thank you.
Did you have any more to add?
No, the verbiage, I'm disappointed.
Mr. President, uh, Mr. Shirley state, stated he can do this, and, uh, we do, we do pay for his services.
Yes.
Uh, he, he says he can do it, and it's recorded that he can do it, so we're, I would say we hold him to that. And, uh, I think if he went out and got another attorney, which I'm not in favor of, that they would have to start the process all over, which would be more time.
Well, I'm not in favor of that, I just want a commitment that's gonna get done.
But he's, uh, Mr. Shirley, your commitment is that you can get, you, you understand the nature of, of what we're talking about now.
We'll write, we'll write a multiple ballot question ordinance that...
Here it is, right here.
I understand that.
Uh, did you, did you see a copy of this by Jake?
I did, I just got a copy of it.
Okay, um, but, Mr. President, uh, he stated he can do it, and I would, uh, accept him at his word that he can do it.
So you're making a motion that we, that we had Mr. Shirley go ahead and reword this in the format and bring it back to us on the, uh, 14th of May, is that?
And 14th of May is your next public hearing.
I would make a motion that we ask Ms. Shirley to go ahead and do this, but use this as a guide, he can reword it or whatever, but these are...
We, we can't take input from the audience at this point.
Well, if he comes up here, we can't have public comment after he makes changes.
At, at the end of the meeting, the public comments.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, you, you get called up, sir.
Thank you.
This, this covers all three points, as far as I'm concerned.
Probably does, but we need to leave it in the hands of legal people.
Well, exactly, but to use this as a guide, is what I'm saying, he can reword it and add to it or take away from it or whatever, but the, the, um...
By the way, Ms. Shirley, this is the, uh, this is the example of the Full Walton Beach, if you wanted a copy of that. Okay, did I, did I hear a motion or did I?
No, I, I said I would make a motion, uh, use these, but if, if nobody's happy with these, then I, I won't.
Well, I...
Mr. President.
I think you wanted to say that, that he didn't have to use these verbatim, he wouldn't use them as guides.
Yes, yes, he can, he can, he can reword them, add to them, take away from them, but the basic meat needs to stay in it.
Mr. Hayes?
Uh, I was waiting to finish, seeing if that was gonna be a motion, but, um, it's a little vague, so, uh, maybe, can you re-speak it again so that...
Well, I'm not making a motion.
Oh, I thought you were making a motion. Please clarify the motion you wanna make.
Okay, Mr. President, um, I like to make a motion that we, um, direct Mr. Shirley to go back and, um, review and make changes to the charter, um, option that he's presented and look, and present other options to us as discussed.
Have a motion, I have a second.
A second.
Okay, a motion, a second, that we have Mrs. Shirley rework this and bring it back to us no later than the 14th of May. Is that correct? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Well, Mr. Shirley, thank you for being on the hot seat.
I'm used to it.
I know, it's not the first time in your life you've ever been on the hot seat.
No, it's not. I think it's been a couple of times.
Mr. Block, you had, you had some, another...
And that would be on the steward.
Sometimes it's a couple of times a week, so...
Mr. Shirley, that'd be on the steward, the availability of our council if need be.
Absolutely, yes. Okay, he'll, he'll be in the loop. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we get to the public opportunity on the council positions, propositions. We do limit, uh, input to, uh, three minutes presentation. So anybody in the audience would like to address the council?
Andrew Rentsich, 197 Villacres. I was the vice chair for the Charter Review Committee. Um, it, it definitely was something we looked for when we were devising, you know, the, what we were gonna present to you, and that was to have a multi-question ballot, because we did not want to repeat history. The two biggest topics are the actual form of government, whether it's, with strong mayor, weak mayor, or a, a council manager structure, and whether or not the city clerk was appointed and or, um, by election. So those are the two ballot measures in speaking with, uh, that have to be divided in order to, to have an even, fair, um, referendum. And, and I can't say, uh, anymore, uh, Mr. Whitton, council president, you, you take everything I pretty much wrote down, uh, and I appreciate everybody's feedback, uh, trying to stay in line with what we as a committee had put forth towards you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to approach the council? Please give us your name, address, and limit your remarks to three minutes.
Michael Montebano, I'm, uh, 650 Territory Lane, Crestview, and, uh, I moved to Crestview three years ago. Before that, I lived in Lemoore, California, and that was a city manager, council, former government, and I support this change in the charter to go to a city council directing a city manager in that form of government, 'cause I think that's the way a city this size is the only way it's gonna successfully operate. My concern is, is that I don't think you can expect the voters to pick a charter al carte, that you need to come up with best practices, this is not new science. There are best practices out there on way to establish a city government with a city manager directed by a city council that represents the people. We have at-large members, and we have precinct members, so that's a pretty good way of making sure everybody gets fair representation. I have a little bit of problem that we don't use the city council organization where they would appoint the mayor and mayor pro temp after every election, because the, the, if we're gonna go in all-in on this, this would make the mayor more of a ceremonial role, and, uh, he would run the city council meetings, but the city manager is your guy on the ground to make things happen. And I say, change as little as you absolutely have to do.
as little as you absolutely have to do that. I've never seen that where city clerks aren't hired, interviewed by the city manager with a recommendation to the city council, where they vote on it. It's not like the city manager's gonna sit there and run a at-will employee behind your back without you knowing about it. You guys gotta vote on it. I think that you need to come up, if you want to sell this to the people, then you have to have a consensus among yourselves and say, "This is the way we want our city charter to look," and then provide that language to them and let them vote on it. I agree with the mayor there. People are smart enough to figure out what they want to do, but you gotta be able to sell it, and if three of you are saying it, "Well, I want to have an elected city clerk instead of an appointed one," which is, happens to be the way we do it right now, you're just gonna start confusing folks. You have to say, "This is what we've decided is the way for Crestview to go forward," and come up with the language. "I liked how you redlined what's available. I can read it. I could saw what changes you've all made. I think I would've made a couple of more changes, and I'm a little concerned about the veto power of the mayor." If you're gonna have a city manager, you're gonna hire somebody that doesn't want to just be a bellhop for a mayor that can veto anything. We want to hire a city manager that's gonna come in here and say, "This is my opportunity to show people what I can do." And he's gonna take direction from the city council, or you're gonna let him go. But I, my experience with city managers is they're professionals. They come in, they try to do a good job. And that's not a perfect world, too. There's a lot of things about contracts and severance paying things that you're gonna have to accept with the city manager, but that comes later. Right now, you gotta sell the public on the language of a charter, and you all have to be unified on that, and you say, "This is what we want. Vote yes or no." I don't think you can get around there and say, "Well, if you decide you don't want this, do you want these two things, too?" À la carte just doesn't sell it for me. I know I'm running up against my time. I appreciate your time, council. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to approach the council? Last call. I'm not gonna go around the room. This is a special meeting, and we just had one last week, so if there's no other, yes, Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Fountain asked me today to get an RSVP from everyone, one of our officials that plans to be there Thursday, and I know you...
Did you get the time change?
He said four o'clock.
No, the original RSVP was three.
Yes, so I got that four o'clock. So, you too. Mr. Hayes, you gonna be there?
Yeah, I sent RSVP.
Okay, okay, good. So, I'm, I don't know about Mr. Cox, I'll find out.
I think he's still out of town.
Out of town, I'll be there.
I think he's gone a while.
Thursday. Mrs. Roy, you gonna be there?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Turner, you gonna be there?
Yeah, I think I'll be there.
Time change is four.
I think it was elected officials only.
Elected officials only, I guess. You can still, it's gonna be an open meeting.
Yes, he can be there.
Yeah.
Okay, say no further business, we're hereby adjourned this meeting.